This went to Ops, February 1st, for...
Approval. And with additional details inserted about the SAP, what SAP is actually used for.
Okay. Approval of this item would approve a one-year renewal of an SAP software maintenance and license agreement with SAP Public Services, Inc., in the amount of $301,568.59. Take it away.
Hi, I'm Nancy Peterson. I'm the Director of Enterprise Applications, and I am here to bring the SAP annual maintenance renewal in front of the Board tonight. In the background, the portion that I added was the first two lines that speaks to what SAP is used for in the district. This system is what provides management for human resources, staffing, payroll, finance and accounting, purchasing and logistics. It's basically all of our business transactions are put through this system.
So, in other words, we have no choice?
In a way.
If we don't renew this contract, we cripple this district. Is that correct?
We make it very difficult to have support for this system.
Okay, so then we bring out the chisels and the stone, and we try and do business that way?
We could.
Okay.
The system actually will keep running, but the support is very important for things like tax updates and legal changes that we actually receive very good support on.
Okay. Do I have questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues, please? Director Mack, Ops Chair.
I just wanted to add that with this additional clarification that's in the bar now, we had also recommended that it be moved to the consent agenda for next time for approval.
Good to know. Other questions, comments or concerns? Director Burke.
This, I didn't put this out in advance, so if you don't have the info, just let me know. I'm curious, you know, this is essentially whatever, $300,000 or other. And as a, when we think about that as a dollar amount relative to the investment that we've put in SAP over the last X number of years, can you kind of ballpark percentage-wise? Is this a 1%, a 5%? When I think about software renewal and maintenance as a percentage of original purchase price, can you help put a frame for that?
Yes, in general, this is about 22% of purchase price annually, and that's about average for a large ERP system like SAP.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number two, approval of the QBSI Xerox copier contract amendment one. This went to Ops, February 1st, for...
For approval with the additional details and clarification of the actual costs to be inserted, and we also, once that was inserted, recommended it to be put on the consent agenda.
Approval of this item would increase contract number RFP 02321 with QBSI Xerox by $1,808,000 through the end of the contract, which is set to expire July 31, 2018. The funding to cover this contract increase was included in the 2017-18 budget. May I start with a, Director Patu?
Is it just for certain departments?
These are the multifunctional devices, the copy machines, that are in the schools, libraries, computers, labs, district offices.
So, it's for everywhere?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director Burke?
Just to understand, this is essentially a service contract allowance, so vendors will bill based on actual, but this is the sort of projected annual total? Or is there, is this a, I guess, how does the actual site-based, you know, if there's major service required one place and minor service required another place, how's that managed under this contract?
Under this contract, we're billed per-page printed, different rates for the type of printing that's done, either color or black and white, and then that is inclusive of the maintenance and the service that we receive.
I have a quick question. Are we billed for scanning?
I believe that's a part of the per-page cost rate.
At some point, I'd like to know what that per-page cost is for scanning, because I've seen a lot of copier contracts in my time, and I know that's one of those places where the contractors take advantage of folks.
Okay. Right now, the per-rate, per-page rate is .01125 for black and white and .041 for color, and I'm not sure...
And that's the scanning per-page? Or that's the copy per page?
That's the copy per page. That's the copy per page.
Okay.
But I can get that information for you.
Appreciate that before action.
Okay.
Thank you. Other comments, questions, concerns? Director Patu?
Can she send that to us, too? I'd like to see it.
Absolutely. Send that out to spsdirectors@seattleschools.org. Thanks. Other questions, comments, concerns? Director Pinkham.
Just for the record, can you read why this increase is so much? It is in the documents, but I'd like hopefully the viewers to hear it as well.
The increase is to cover the cost of the taxes and the expansion of new services that wasn't included in the initial estimate when the contract was put together back in 2013.
And those new services are?
Those would be new construction, renovations, special programs that come up and require print services.
Director Pinkham.
Increase sales tax. I want to make sure we're also...
Increase in sales tax. That was 50, I think 56%, isn't it, sales tax?
Seeing no further questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number three, BTA 4, award contract K 5094 to PaSetti Architects for Architectural and Engineering Services for the Franklin High School Window and Door Replacement and Associated Exterior Cladding Repairs Project. This came before Ops, February 1st, for...
Consideration, because the dollars, there was some conflict in the way the dollars were referenced in the original draft.
Let me finish reading it into the record, if you could, please. Thank you, sir.
And I'm, for consideration, have those corrections and, yes.
Approval of this item would approve contract K 5094 in the amount of $347,355 for architectural and engineering services for the Franklin High School Window and Door Replacement and Associated Exterior Cladding Repairs Project. Mr. Best?
Yes, Richard Best, Director of Capital Projects and Planning. Director Mack is correct. We had the Project Mack reference in the fiscal impact, but I wanted to draw the Board's attention to the total project amount. This is a total project amount of $8,763,002, $763,205. This is to replace the existing windows, all of the existing windows in the main building at Franklin High School, and it is to replace some of the historic doors and repair some of the historic doors at Franklin High School. We are not anticipating at this time doing work at the separate gymnasium structure, and so I wanted to make that clear to the school board. We do anticipate, and this contract contemplates, that when we remove the existing windows, some of which have been installed initially, when the school was initially built, that we will encounter some masonry repairs that we need to implement, similar to some of the masonry repairs that we anticipated we'd encounter at Lincoln High School as well. So, that number is included in this budget. We are installing thermopane windows, so we'll have to be working closely with the landmarks board. They have a preference for the historic windows, but I can tell you, they impact the educational plan. I know Director Patu is aware of some of the cold that literally radiates in from the outside into the classrooms. I frequently, in the middle of winter, get telephone calls from the assistant principals at Franklin High School noting how cold their building is, and there is literally very little we can do because they're all single-pane windows, which have zero R-value.
Thank you. I'm going to depart, point of personal privilege. Were you upstairs listening to the public testimony?
I was. I heard the comments about accessibility. I miss the school, but I can tell you that the Americas with Disabilities Act does have a code guideline for children.
Okay, the schools that were referenced were Bryant, Leshai and Green Lake. Greenwood, excuse me, thank you very much, Ms. Rankin. Very, very concerning testimony, and if you could address that in a Friday memo, be very, very grateful.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I will make sure that...
Back to the agenda at hand. Do we have questions, comments and concerns? Director Patu, Franklin Windows.
Yes, Richard's right. It is freezing in there. I've been there a couple of times and would not take my coat off because it is very cold. And so, when you're talking about the windows for Franklin, is that for all the windows? For the whole school?
All the windows in the main building, Director Patu. The gymnasium building is to the west of Franklin High School, and we don't intend on replacing those windows in the gymnasium building. We did have a problem, because you may be aware of it, on February 1st. We did have a problem with the heating system in the gymnasium building, but that was corrected during the district's winter break, so...
So, are you telling me that if I go there tomorrow, that it'll be warm?
In the gymnasium building, it should be warm, yes.
Oh, that's too bad, because I never go to the gymnasium.
But the main building will still be cold.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Best. Number four, Middle School Math Instructional Material Adoption. This came before CNI, February 6th, for...
On February 6th, we moved this forward for approval.
Thank you. Approval of this item would approve the Middle School Math Instructional Material Adoption Committee's recommendation for instructional materials for all middle school math grades six through eight of Seattle Public Schools' classrooms. Do I hear comments, questions or concerns from my colleagues? I am looking for comments, questions or concerns from my colleagues first, please. Thank you. Director Burke?
I would like to, if there are no comments, I'd like to allow staff a little bit of time to share some of the work they've done, which on CNI, we've heard fairly extensively, but I'd like for the rest of you to hear as well, some of the great pieces of work that's going to guide this decision.
And I don't wish to cut anyone off, but I want to make sure that we keep this meeting moving. Thank you, please. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm Anna Box, K-12 Math Program Manager. With me tonight is Patrick Gray, Math Curriculum Specialist. Patrick and I co-facilitated a middle school math textbook adoption process. The process was grounded in our SPS goals and mission. It was informed by a survey of parents and teachers' families about what they want and need most in a math textbook, and it was very closely vetted by our legal office. The adoption committee unanimously recommends the adoption of Envision Math 2.0 as our middle school math book. This recommendation is the result of a year-long process of engagement by a committee of parents, teachers, administrators and community members. Based on their review of materials last spring and taking into account feedback from the community, the committee selected two programs, Envision and Glencoe, for a pilot study in multiple schools this fall.
The pilot study was conducted by 31 teachers and involved over 2,300 middle school math students. The adoption committee's recommendation of Envision is based on several compelling findings from that pilot program. First, while students learned from both programs, students working with Envision showed greater growth than those learning from other programs. Data suggested Envision had a higher benefit for students who historically struggled with mathematics. Students reported that Envision was a help challenged in math, and teachers reported that Envision had excellent tools for differentiation and for supporting a wide range of learners. Finally, student engagement was higher in classrooms using Envision.
We seek your approval for this recommendation and would, of course, be delighted to answer any questions you have.
Director Mack, and then I believe Director Pinkham?
Earlier in the evening, we heard testimony around whether or not jump math was included in the process, and I'm curious to learn a little bit more about that.
Sure, sure. Thank you for asking. In May of 2018, the SPS legal office reviewed the RFP process and found that there was no impropriety, no indiscretion. It is Seattle Public Schools, as a public institution, it is Seattle Public Schools' process to post, to post a notice in trade journals, and this was followed. Every program that was submitted was considered. Jump math did not submit. My understanding additionally is, from what I can tell from their website, that they're not even a full textual material. They're more of a supplement, from what I can tell, but they did not submit.
Follow-up question, Director Mack?
Thank you. The testimony also talked about direct instruction, and I'm wondering how Envision Math operates within or without that framework of direct instruction?
Thank you for asking. One of the things that, well, I should tell you three, there were three themes that arose from the needs assessment survey done before we started the adoption committee. We surveyed parents, we surveyed teachers, we surveyed administrators, and one of the things that they all wanted was a textual material that has precise definitions and formulas. So, that became, that became one of the drivers in the selection process, and I have evidence of how students learned. We were, we created a pre-test and a post-test for teachers and students involved in the pilot. Teachers could choose to give it or not. Most of them wanted to, and so did. It certainly wasn't a requirement, but most of them wanted to and did. And so, I looked, I looked at the growth that students made on standards that are computational. For instance, in sixth grade, students finish up their work with fractions, decimals and whole numbers, and three-quarters of students who were taught from the Envision material for nine years demonstrated proficiency on this. 80% of seventh graders who were taught out of the Envision book demonstrated proficiency on proportional reasoning, one of the big foundations of seventh-grade math. The eighth-grade math program was looking at scientific notation, where again, 75% of students showed proficiency when taught from this program. Does that, does that address your concern?
Director Pinkham?
Thank you. My, actually, I had a question, it's kind of saying what Director Mack has already asked you, but I do have a question on part of the motion. It talks about authorize a superintendent to purchase Envision math with consumable student textbooks. They're going to eat these textbooks or... For additional cost up to $1.8 million. Can you expand further on that, the consumable student textbooks?
Sure, absolutely. So, the, the reference to consumable means that the students write in the book. So, the book has a soft cover and is made of, made of materials that the students are expected to write on. Teachers, parents, students, all told us that this was an aid to student learning and to student success. Part of that is that it helps students with organizational challenges. Part of that is that all students have a bound resource at their fingertips at all times that has these precise definitions, formulas, examples, things like that. But the consumable refers to the fact that the students write in it, so at the end of the year, that, that book is no longer available to next-year student, and so a new addition is purchased for that year's student.
Follow-up, please.
Yeah, and the question is, what you provided as far as the data versus Envision math versus the other, how do you account for teacher involvement? What impacts the actual teacher has versus what the curriculum has?
Sure, absolutely. Our research evaluation and accountability office would agree that the teacher is the single most important factor in student learning, and I'd like to read to you what they said about eighth-grade students learning from Envision. So, even knowing that the teacher has the greatest impact, REA said, and this is one of the last attachments in your bar, attachment I on the third page, REI, or I'm sorry, REA said that students working out of the eighth-grade Envision book were statist, there is statistically significant evidence that students taught from this book have a higher probability of meeting or exceeding standards than students taught from the other book. And so, they factored out everything they could except for student growth and said, sort of independent. I can tell you that it was our, it was, it was our design of the pilot to use both programs north of the Ship Canal and south of the Ship Canal. It was our design to use both programs in classes where students were learning one grade level ahead, to use both programs in classes where students are receiving extra math supports. And consistently, consistently, students learned from both, but they learned more from Envision.
Another follow-up question, Director Pinkham?
Yes, thank you for that. And then, what you said about jump appearing to be a supplement, would then could possibly the teachers that use jump continue to use, use that with Envision?
That's, that's an excellent question. I have not considered that. I think that the answer to that lies in policy, and policy is that schools, the, there's, there is not at this point a recommended supplement, and so, my understanding is that, my understanding is that principals have some discretion in how they, how they spend these funds. I haven't reviewed the product, but I, my understanding is principals have lots of discretion in how they spend building funds. Want to add anything to that? Okay.
Director Burke?
Of course, I have to start with a thank you, because I know we've had a lot of conversations around this, and this is probably the, the least contentious math adoption that's taken place in the last two to three decades in Seattle Public Schools. So, if you ever wonder if, clarifying Director Mack's question, you had asked about a direct instruction. Mr. Nutting's concern was explicit instruction, and so, there's, there's a sort of a historical, I'll call it baggage, around direct instruction versus inquiry, and I think what, what Mr. Nutting was referring to was a level of explicit instruction, which it limits the amount of, of sort of uncertainty. You know, you want to be explicit that the material is provided to the students, that the students are engaging with the material, so there's, there's a level of intentionality, which hasn't necessarily been the modality of previous math instruction.
I would agree.
And I think that's, there's, there's an element there that I just wanted to be clear about. And then a question around the eight-year thing. As I read this, and I think we discussed this in committee, and I didn't fully grasp it, the, the license is basically an eight-year, we pay the money, we get eight years of consumable materials. The ninth year, we get continued use of digital resources, but if we want print resources, it's at a copy of $21 per student?
My understanding is that the ninth-year materials, the ninth-year consumable materials are also free. It's an eight-year contract with a ninth year thrown in, is my understanding. We were able to be on a conference call with the publisher. As you know, we're not allowed to have direct contact with the, with the vendor, but through the purchasing office here, we were able to be on a conference call and ask that very question. So, the eight-year contract provides nine years of materials if we still want the materials in that ninth year.
Okay, I guess if that's something that you could maybe go through and scrub the bar and put a clarification, because the recommended motion indicates options for continued use beyond eight years, but it doesn't indicate what that is. And then, page three, under fiscal impact, it indicates that if a new adoption does not take place within nine years, instructional materials could be purchased at a projected unit price of $21 per student.
Right. And my understanding is that that, that would begin in the 10th year if we are still using this product.
Okay, as long as you can clarify that with contracts and just make sure that there's the language in here that's explicit around the use of the digital resources, the additional free year as, as year nine, that would be really great.
Thank you. Will do.
Okay, wrap up comment and questions. I appreciate, and I remember well, the conversation about jump math. I appreciate that what we did was legally defensible and all of that. However, I believe that Mr. Nutting made a good point, that we did reach out to some of the publishers and invite them to bid. We were aware that jump was out there, and we did not reach out. So, a lesson learned in terms of expanding our reach on additional curriculum adoptions. I have questions about differently-abled students, able to use these proposed curricular materials, as well as their relevance and adaptability for our ELL students. Thank you.
Would you, would you like a response to that at this time?
I would indeed, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for asking. Thank you for asking. The first response to that is that in pilot classrooms, we observed that students were twi, we were twice as likely to see teachers using supports that differentiate for students when we were in an Envision classroom than when we were in the other classroom. So, we were twice as likely to see that differentiation happening. It's built into every lesson, or the supports and structures for that are built into every lesson in the Envision program. Classrooms piloting Envision had significantly higher student engagement, and again, because we were all over the city and we were running the gamut of the age levels of students, some, we had some elementary school students doing sixth and seventh grade math, and we also had some students who had historically struggled in math doing, doing these programs, and regardless of which ones of those populations we were observing, almost 100% engagement. Frequently, we were in classrooms with 100% engagement. I met with two of our special ed supervisors here in, here in the Stanford Center and showed them the product and said, "How will this work for your teachers and for students receiving special ed services?" And some of their comments included that having a balance of conceptual and procedural problems will be very effective. They felt like the differentiation supports are readily accessible. Their comment was that this should engage all learners. They noticed that the material is presented in multiple modalities. We have a robust professional development plan that will include all the teachers of all our students, not just some teachers of some students.
And our ELL population, please?
Yes, and our ELL population, again, very, very similar. The textbook comes with language supports built into every lesson. We saw teachers using these. We asked students, we interviewed students about their experience, and repeatedly, students whose first language is English, students whose first language is not English, said that the book was helpful to... that the book was helpful to them when, when they had a misunderstanding about a word or when they were curious about a procedure. But again, we will, we will, our PD program will include our ELL teachers and how to, how to teach, how all of our teachers will teach all of our students.
And our dual-language immersion programs, how will they be affected by this curriculum adoption?
That's a, I don't have information on that at this point.
Can you get back to us on that?
I can.
Friday memo?
I can.
One of the things that came up with the LA K through five adoption, specifically Concord, was that unintended consequences that we're working through, but it's, it's a heavy lift. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
And thank you for your team and your outreach and your engagement.
You're, you're very welcome. Thank you for the support.
Thank you. Okay, next up, number five. City of Seattle Department of Education and Early Learning, Seattle Preschool Program Service Agreement 2018-19 came before CNI on February 6th for?
For consideration. Looking for a little bit more information in the bar.
Thank you. Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to enter into a service agreement with and accept Seattle Preschool Program grant funds from the City of Seattle Department of Education and Early Learning. Acceptance of funds in motion A will allow continuation of 17 preschool program classrooms currently operated by the district. The acceptance of funds in motion B would allow the expansion of up to seven new classrooms for a total of up to 24 classrooms. Ms. Toner, take it away, and could you introduce your guests as well, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you for summarizing both those motions. You got it. Let's see, so first of all, thank you to all of you who took time to meet with me in two-by-twos or to do some site visits. I really appreciated that. So we got to front-load this conversation. Hopefully, we can keep this pretty brief this evening. I am Keshel Toner. I'm the Executive Director for Curriculum and Instruction, and we have all sorts of folks here this evening. So we have special education partners, we have a principal from Cedar Park Elementary. Let's see, city partner, so Monica and Dwayne are here as well, in case you have a question that pertains to one of those particular groups.
Can Dwayne's names and titles, please?
Oh, I'm not sure about the, the, you guys want to come up and introduce yourselves? The titles, I don't know. This is Dwayne Chappell, and this is Monica Liangatere, and they work at the city's Department of Education and Early Learning. Yeah? Okay. Okay, we're going to keep clipping along here. So the thing to remember when we talk about preschool is that it is a proven strategy for eliminating opportunity gaps. When we met in our two-by-twos, we started to look at some initial data from our students, and we also looked at data, looking at the actual students who are represented in our classrooms. So board directors asked us to add that actual student demographic data to the bar, and you'll see that that's in there under the racial equity section. As you know, the last spring, the school board voted to accept city funds for Seattle Preschool Program to support 17 classrooms taught by Seattle Public School staff. I just want to pause there for a minute because that's a really big deal. City of Seattle collects levy dollars and then grants funds to Seattle Public Schools for SEA, represented people to teach preschool. So that means a certificated teacher, an instructional assistant, and a classroom tutor, teaching somewhere between 18 and 20 students that are four years old in Seattle Public Schools. This is the third year of our city partnership. In our first year, we had three classrooms funded by Seattle Preschool Program, and then we grew to eight classrooms, and now we have 17 classrooms. Of our 17 classrooms, we have two Head Start classrooms that are funded for the second half of the day, which we're very proud of that work. And we also have four inclusion classrooms that we call SPP plus. That plus indicates that we staff those a little bit differently because we recognize that we have, you know, five students with special needs in the, in the classroom, and then 13 students that are typically developing with an enhanced staffing model. Thank you to Directors Harris and Geary for your direction to convene a preschool task force. We did that April 2016, and we kept meeting until December 2016. And that task force recommended that we expand our partnership exactly to serve students more intentionally with special needs and to fund Head Start classrooms as well. This year, well, I told you about that already, Seattle Public Schools continues to be a high-quality preschool provider, serving diverse preschoolers. You can see the student demographics listed in the bar. And also, something to note is that Seattle Public Schools has met every performance milestone over the last three years. So we're proud of that work, and we continue to deliver on that promise of high-quality preschool programming. When we met in our two-by-twos, we were able to look at some initial data, which I did not include in the bar because it's a really small sample size of kids that we looked at last year, just those eight classrooms of kids. But we have looked at their kindergarten readiness, and we're seeing evidence of impact. So students eliminating that opportunity gap before they come, before they come to kindergarten. Also, thanks to those of you who visited classrooms with me this year or in the past. We saw four-year-old students that were joyful in their classrooms. This is not a junior kindergarten. This is really high-quality preschool. We saw happy kids doing things like counting collections because we've looked, that's a math strategy where you put groups of interesting things in a container, and then preschool kids get to count them. Because we've looked at our kindergarten data as a whole district, and math is an area that we could improve on. So we're doing some of that targeted work inside of this partnership. We also spoke to educators about their work, and they're pleased, and they shared these things with all of you, to be treated like professional teachers. Sometimes preschool is a little bit marginalized that way, and having this partnership really gives them the respect and the professional development that they deserve as, as being high-quality teachers. We also have a family survey data that we have asked our families, what do they think? And 95% of our families have rated SPP programming as good or excellent. The seven, the current 17 classrooms and up to seven proposed classrooms have been vetted with, with facilities. That's been an ongoing conversation over many years. And Dr. Herndon is not here this evening, but I believe he's been in communication with you around his stance, that this is an annual agreement, and that we put in the work ahead of time to really look and see with all of the moving parts, how, and all of the variables, is this, are these recommendations going to be sound for the next several, you know, three to five years? With the thinking that, you know, three to five years of high-quality programming is exactly that, helping more kids be ready for, for kindergarten. One of our directors asked us for a map to say, hey, Keshel, where are these classrooms? And can you help me understand this proposal, motion A and motion B? What does that mean? So I think you have one up there with you. It looks like this. And on the front of the map, we tried to make this pretty user-friendly. So the green boxes are the current 17 classrooms, and then the purple boxes are the proposed sites for next year. On the back, if you'd like more of a table, you can see the top part of that chart shows the 17 classrooms, and then the bottom part of that chart shows the proposed sites for expansion. I do want to put a little disclaimer on there, that the program model is, for the new classrooms is our best information at this point, okay? So there are a lot of different things feeding into that current program model recommendation, student enrollment trends with regard to SPP plus programming in particular. And also, there's a nuance to Head Start programming, that there are two decision-making bodies for Head Start. One is our school board, and then also is the Policy Council. So the Head Start Policy Council will be making a recommendation at the same time, sort of in tandem, as the school board moves through its approval process. Okay, I think that that's all I had on my talking points and notes.
Questions, comments, concerns by my colleagues? Director Mack?
I really did enjoy going out and seeing these preschools in action, and so appreciated that opportunity to be direct and see the great work that's going on. In particular, it was really fascinating up at Olympic Hills, the number of English-language learners in the, in the classroom and the, the inherent English-language learning that was going on at that age. So I was, you know, it was impressive. As folks continue to hear me say, I continue to be concerned about our lack of space in our buildings and our capacity crisis that exists, and that we're not covering those costs. And I've asked this a number of times and would like to put it out there again, is I think it should be considered that this contract actually cover the cost of the space as well for the 24 spaces. If I understand correctly, we are paying rent for the center school in a city-owned property? So I hope that we continue that conversation and continue talking about really, you know, appropriately covering the costs on those things. Mr. Nielsen?
Excuse me. Are you done with?
Not, not quite, actually. I had, I had.
Continue your comments, and then we will ask the deputy to speak.
Okay, great, thank you. So that, that was a comment slash question. My other thing, without flip here to respond to the head about that building having long-term capacity because the neighboring attendance area school is really overloaded, and that's been going on for quite a while, that that needs to be corrected. So EC Hughes is a question mark, and BF Day is a question mark from a capacity standpoint for me.
I can address some of those things, and if you want more information.
Please do, and then we'll call Mr., excuse me, Deputy Superintendent Nielsen up as well.
Sounds good. Okay, so quickly, I'll address the EC Hughes. Yes, Rox Hill is moving from Rox Hill Elementary into EC Hughes building. The whole school is moving there. And so right now, at EC Hughes, we have, at Rox Hill, we have one full-day Head Start classroom, and the proposal would be to have potentially two, the other two classrooms funded out for the second half of the day, which would be great for the Rox Hill community at EC Hughes, because then we could have, you know, a nice cohort of preschool kids feeding right into that school.
And BF Day, please?
Yes.
May, may I run the meeting, and you'll get your chance to wrap it up? The BF Day concerns that she raised, please?
Yep, I think that would probably be most appropriate for Dr. Herndon to respond to because he's done a bit of an analysis, thinking about redrawing boundaries and timelines. So thanks for your raising that concern, and we can address it.
Okay, and Deputy Nielsen, your turn, sir. Thank you.
Stephen Nielsen, Deputy Superintendent. As you, to answer the question about leased space versus space that we provide to our community partners, all rental space for anyone, and we charge full market value, and it goes all the way to zero rent for what is called our community-aligned initiatives. Those are very specific and approved activities that assist us in the education of our students as they enter our school and/or they're there during school days after or before or summertime. This particular program has been assigned that value because it is adding value to our students. We believe that's true, so that is why they do not pay rent.
Do you have follow-up questions? Director Mack?
I do. On the, on the Rox Hill at EC Hughes, is it more appropriate to say Rox Hill at EC Hughes, or is it becoming a change of the building name? I just want clarification on that part. Sure, we do sort of struggle with that. And so we should get clarity around how we're going to refer to that moving forward. But what I'm talking about is the school community, which is now Rox Hill at Rox Hill, when it moves over to EC Hughes, that, the Head Start that would be attached to that.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Nielsen, for the clarification on the alignment and the agreements that we have. And if I remember the history on that, it goes back 20 years or so, when we had a lot of space in our buildings. And what I, I, I think it's actually a wonderful thing that we have these partnerships. And when we're looking at moving out our, our before and after-school care partners, as we heard testimony earlier today from, from Schools Out Washington, and we know that with our capacity crunch, we are going to be impacting a number of school communities potentially on not having that, I have concern around the impact of that overall. So, you know, are we kind of being favoritism towards Seattle Preschool Program and not also protecting our other partners who we have had that alignment agreement with for a long time? Because those are benefits to our students that are, and families that are really important. And I kind of continue to be concerned how the capacity crisis is impacting. So I know there's no easy solution now. I just hope that we keep the costs and capacity and all of this in our minds as we move forward on the facility master planning.
Thank you. Other comments, questions, concerns? Director Burke?
We had a conversation in the CNI meeting around the, in the bar, it indicates expansion of up to seven new classrooms between four and seven. And I was wondering if you could just provide a quick snippet for the rest of the directors to understand how that decision will be made, what that will look like, and what we're actually approving here?
Sure. So all of the different timelines are all at play right now, and that's why the language reads from four to seven. And what I mean by that, Seattle Public Schools enrollment is ongoing, and we need a little bit more information. Same goes with the City of Seattle. Right now, they're vetting their RFPs, right, for community-based organizations and contracting with Seattle Public Schools at the same time. And so as all of, as there's more information, then we'll be able to figure that out. But actually, what's our main concern is facilities and making sure that our proposal that we bring forward to you, I think it's March 7th, that we will have tighter parameters around that four to seven. But technically speaking, if you were to approve the motion as it's written now, then we would be able to have up to seven. If there were some anomaly in enrollment, that there's a spike somewhere that we really weren't accepting, then we would need to amend our proposal. Sure.
Director Pinkham?
Thank you for all this information. And I just want to get back to like the rental agreement and how that works out, that, because there are other organizations that will rent, but it's usually like for one night, and how this differs with maybe these preschool programs that are year-long, and we're saying this is a year-to-year. So are we, in a sense, going into one-year agreements with them to have the space? And then do they cover the other associated class, you know, like janitorial and plumbing, electric, that we do charge other people that do this, but we don't charge them rent, but then we do charge them the other?
Assistant Superintendent Bergy?
So we charge an indirect rate. As you may remember, that has been going up and phasing up to the full amount allowed. So there's about a 15, 16% indirect rate that's being charged to the city's programs, and that covers those costs for things like utilities and water and accounting and budgeting and HR, some of those costs. And I believe there's a line item in the budget directly for custodial support as well. So we have reviewed that in the budget office to line out, we understand the board's direction is that it's to cover full costs, and so we feel comfortable and are recommending approval of this, given what we know.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that's, that they're not totally free, it isn't, there is still some associated costs that they're getting in.
No. No, they're not, no, they're not getting it totally free, and we're probably not super excited about the indirect rate.
Yes, thank you.
Other comments, questions, concerns? My turn. My, what a difference six years makes.
I know, we're all a little older.
Well, we're a lot older. And I almost feel like doing this work, it's dog years times seven. Six years ago, this place was packed, and people were very, very angry and misunderstanding folks. And we've come a long way, and I thank folks for that. Still have some concerns, which I'm sure shocks you greatly. Why only for SPP plus programs? If our quote-unquote "North Star," to borrow verbiage, is inclusion, why only for SPP plus programs?
I know, I struggle with that too. And here, here's our thinking behind that. The classroom, building these classrooms, we have to get it, we have to get it right. And so this year, we started with four classrooms, and we've learned so much. I know more about the work now than we did last year. And so having that really measured growth is important for all of us. It's important for us to listen to our practitioners. It's important that we build trust with our families, and it's important that we work together to really streamline and make sure that the mechanisms are predictable for families and for teachers and for all of us. So it is, it's difficult to have that really pragmatic and measured growth, but it's our best recommendation to set us, everybody up for success.
our best recommendation to set us, everybody up for success.
So, what are we going to do next year, provided the Department of Early Learning levy that is going to be ostensibly combined with the Seattle Pre-K levy next year? How many-plus programs are we going to talk about next February? When are we going to leverage and exponentiate this program?
Well, we don't know yet. We need to look at our data. We need to keep building our programming and make sure that we're, you know, that we have the right ratios, that we have the right feedback from families and that we work with SEA to build a strong and sustainable program and with our city partners as well. So, I can't tell you at this moment in time what that proposal will look like. If you'd asked me that question last year at this time, I wouldn't have been able to predict it.
And I did. And I did.
Yep. It's a work in progress and it's collaborative work with teachers, our board, all of our different stakeholders.
Prior to Mayor Murray leaving office, he indicated that he was willing to discuss removing the 25% hold-back penalty or bonus, depending on what part of the street you live on, how you characterize that. Has that conversation gone forward?
So, I think the first thing to remember is that we've been successful in meeting every milestone along the way. So, we've earned every single dollar that we're eligible to receive through this funding stream, which is not a surprise to me because we're Seattle Public Schools, high-quality provider. The other thing I'd like to remember is that, yes, it's city funding, but this is Seattle Public Schools program, right? So, essentially, what happens is the city grants us dollars and inside of these 17 classrooms are Seattle Public Schools teachers supervised by principals. So, it's really Seattle Public Schools preschool program in partnership with the Seattle, with our city partners, funded by the Seattle preschool program.
So, why the hold-back?
So, okay. So, I can start this off and if anybody else wants to jump in, you go right ahead, that it's my understanding that that is the funding mechanism that all of the grantees for Seattle preschool program are working under. We've made that work in Seattle Public Schools, meeting each one of those milestones along the way.
I'll come support you.
Why, thank you. Your turn.
Hi, I'm Monica Liang. I'm here as Director of Early Learning for Department of Education, Early Learning. And Duane Chappell, our Director of Deal. As you know, performance pay has been a part of all of our levy agreements, so also the family and education levy as well as Seattle preschool program. So, it is part of the institutional history of...
But it's not in the ordinance.
That's, that's probably true. Yes, you're right. Okay, but that's been the practice. Now, you're correct that we, that with our previous mayor, that he was interested in discussing it further. We have not at this time. We've only had a few opportunities to discuss anything with Mayor Durkin and so that has not come up yet. And I also remember that, I believe it was the preschool task force that was also asked to consider that question and I believe that they also made the recommendation to not change things at this time. So, I just wanted to remember that. But, but it's something that we haven't discussed yet with Mayor Durkin, so it's on our list.
Thank you. One last question from Ms. Toner and then a comment and a thank you. I was advised that the task force report has been taken off of our website. Is there any possibility that that's true?
Hmm. That is possible?
And if it is true, can we get it back up there post-taste?
Yes.
Thank you. And last, I noticed that you put several of these programs in District 6, thereby making it beyond impossible for me to vote against.
I did not do that intentionally.
And I am, without question, a huge fan of early learning.
Thank you.
I do believe it's exceptionally expensive, but I believe we amortize those costs. I do appreciate how the tenor and tone of this conversation has changed. I appreciate immensely the partnership that has gone on here. But I want to see 10 SPP-plus programs. I'll say it again, I'm going to bring you snippets of last February's meeting. In my heart, and I think I can speak for Director Geary and it's not often that I would deign to or be brave enough to, but we have to exponentiate inclusion with our differently-abled youngsters. Thank you. Other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, moving on. Thank you very much. Number six, amending board policy number 3210, non-discrimination, acts of hostility and defamation, and repeal of board policy D51.00 and board procedure D51.01, anti-retaliation. This came before A&amp;F on February 5th for...
For consideration and which I'm going to assume that anytime we want to change any kind of board policy, we want to make sure we have a good discussion on it, unless Director Mack has a comment on it, since I wasn't at this session.
Let me read this, please, and then it's yours and Mr. Van Duser's. Thank you. Approval of this item would appeal an older general anti-retaliation policy and procedure and adds anti-retaliation provisions to other relevant policies and procedures. Director Mack and then Mr. Van Duser, please.
Director Mack can speak more eloquently to this, but the consideration was that we were also including amending a policy and not just the procedures to ensure that we didn't drop language out of policy and just put it into procedure. And so, I think Mr. Van Duser can clarify all of that.
Take it away. For those folks that don't know, Nate Van Duser is our policy guru and keeps the board in line, coordinated, and on task.
Thank you. Yes, good evening. I'm Nate Van Duser, Director of Policy and Board Relations. I know you have a 7:30 goal, so we're going to try our hardest to get there. The action report in front of you repeals an older board policy and procedure and compensates that repeal by amending another to fill the gap. As some of you might remember, last fall, the board approved a new board policy, number 5245, anti-retaliation, which provides broad retaliation protection for employees. And after that went through, staff went back and looked at two older anti-retaliation policy and procedure, D51.00 and D51.01, and looked to see if we could now pull those off the books. When we envisioned a world without those, we found a couple holes in our retaliation protections still and we had to amend an additional policy and procedure to help fill those holes. So, that analysis is all on page two of the bar. If you want to get into the details, there's more policies than I could cite here. But the main point is, after these changes, if the board were to approve, staff are confident that we have retaliation protections in place that are sufficient, in particular for the areas related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying, sexual harassment, and anti-discrimination.
And I might add that that package of policies took a good piece of last year and involved several different departments in this building and was a very heavy lift.
Yes.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Burke, please.
Thank you for this work and just a request for you to share with staff, the communications team. I do really like the table on page two that identifies what, you know, depending on role and function, if there's a way that we can make that public-facing as part of our website once we finalize this work, that would be really appreciated.
Director Pinkham.
Yeah, thank you as well for this, Mr. Van Duser, what you do to help us make sure we're streamlined, keeping us in order. But I also wanted to look at this, when we look at this kind of anti-discrimination stuff, especially with our transgender populations, as we're looking at gender-neutral bathrooms. So, I was listening to the radio today and they talk about how sometimes unfair to some of our transgender students when the unisex bathroom, there's only one in an entire building and if they have to go, they're late to class because they have to go all the way across to one of the other side of the building to use the facilities, whereas other students, oh, I got the men or women's right next to me and I don't have to worry about going to across the building. That we do look at that as we continue to move forward with these type of policies and procedures, that we are inclusive of everyone and keep that in mind.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Mr. Van Duser, enjoy the heck out of your vacation. You well-earned it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Number seven, waiving the requirement for four oversight work sessions for school year 2017-18, found within board policy number 1010, board oversight of management. This came before the Executive Committee, February 8th, for approval. Approval of this item would waive the requirements in policy number 1010 for a minimum of four oversight work sessions for the school year 2017-18. Two board oversight sessions would be held in 2017-18, but the remaining time would be spent on pressing priorities. Mr. Burke, would you address this, please, since I was unable to make that meeting? I think it speaks for itself.
Absolutely, yeah. As part of what President Harris mentioned during her board comments, the Executive Committee is working with staff to prioritize the workflow for the year and the conclusion is that there's not enough year. So, one of the ways to address that was to eliminate, just for this year, two of the oversight work sessions for required by policy. And we are actually slightly ahead of our policy-required cadence on that. And so, when we put up on the board of, would we rather do these departmental oversight work sessions or would we rather take on some of these time-critical work streams that are right in front of us as a full board, that's what was the genesis of this work.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing, ah, good catch, Co-Director Mack. I haven't seen you move that quick. Director Mack, let's go.
Out of curiosity, what are the two topics that we're skipping this year? Do we know?
We actually, by skipping them, we did not identify them. So, they were not previously identified. We have to do a finance and, help me out here, Nate.
Human resources.
Human resources and finance are required by policy. The other two are rotating and we did not select what those two would be, so we don't know what we missed out on.
Which means next year, we're going to have some catch-up to do. But right now, we are looking at the train called Core 24 and a number of other major lifts and we have to still stand at the end of the year and we're killing our people and ourselves. Okay. The board will retire into executive session for the next 25 minutes or less. Thank you, everyone, for being here and we're only five minutes off that 7:30 goal. Much appreciated.